Thank you for coming. I will call our school committee meeting for June 9th to order. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Do I pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the free public, for which it stands, for which it is meant, under God, in his name, and for the breathing justice of our home.
And if you could remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the Uvalde Robb Elementary School shooting. This is actually our first meeting since that those events took place. Thank you. Okay, we'll do an introduction of members.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Matt Earnworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And I think it's the end of the school year, so we don't have student reps with us tonight. I think during our committee forum, we'll update on the events we are aware of and congratulate our graduates, et cetera. And then we did move our agenda, actually, we did, right? So we have school committee items first, and we have a field trip request for our marching band. If Mr. Schaper could join us at the table, please. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for inviting me. So we are, little historical note, we used to go to Disney every four years, the marching band did. We went 2004, 2008, 2012. And then our former music director retired, and I put together a panel of parents to think about what we wanted to do. We ended up doing the Nashville Christmas Parade. And then, as some of you know, we were scheduled to do the National Memorial Day Parade, and then, so it happened. But there's been a renewed interest in going back to Disney. So I thought, you know what, this might be a good year for it, meaning next year, next April vacation. So that's what this tentative itinerary is. I have to say that this is tentative. Obviously, we don't have plane tickets yet, and that could adjust things by a day forward or a day back. And because of that, that's why the price is also estimated, because, you know, we don't know exactly what the plane tickets will come in at.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schaper on the Disney trip, besides can you go with them?
Just sorry, we actually perform down at Magic Kingdom. We always used to tell the kids when we used to go, that's probably the biggest crowd you'll ever play for. And walking through the wall, when they open up the wall, and seeing all these, you know, camera flashes go off is a pretty cool experience.
That's great. Do you know what music selection you're... That's totally not...
Definitely...
Putting you on the spot.
Not quite there yet. Our uniforms for our fall show this year, our chef's outfits. And so the idea has been tossed around that maybe we perform music from Ratatouille. And I thought, that actually might fit. So, that's a Disney movie, right? Otherwise, I could be in trouble.
It is. It might be more fitting in Epcot, though, because they just opened a new Ratatouille ride.
Oh, we could be crossing parks and representing the other park at Magic Kingdom.
We did, just so the school committee is aware, we did reach out to the Board of Health to just talk about, again, you know, the status of state travel, and, you know, overnight, that kind of thing. Our town nurse was on vacation, so we were trying to gather some information from her. Just thought that the committee might find it helpful, if there are any recommendations that they had. But we'll have to wait till we hear back from them, or from her, next week on that.
But you typically have a nurse traveling with you?
Yeah. Every time we leave the district, we travel with a nurse, who happens to be, also be a parent. We've always been fortunate that we have a parent that is a nurse, that is okay with coming with us to every single place we go. So, and she's already said that she would be available to come on this trip with us.
Any other questions, comments? So I assume you're looking for this to be approved as this tentative itinerary, so you can bring it to parents and start taking payments, doing fundraisers?
Yep.
All right, so a motion is made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the marching band trip for Disney for next April break, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to abstain. Any opposed? And I'll be abstaining, just because I, full disclosure, will be helping plan the trip. So...
I think everybody out there voted yes. Just for the record.
All right, so...
The school committee is going, right?
I have banners that he's been carried, so yeah, that'd be great.
Estimated cost is on here, you can absolutely...
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to our retirees' recognition.
I think I'm missing one.
Are you missing me?
Can you get something?
Is that the...
No, it's the back.
This is like page two.
Do you have the old one?
I do. I just want to do it automatically.
No, it's not.
Sorry.
No worries.
All right, staff recognition. We have our retirees here with us here tonight. Actually, only one in attendance, which nobody's going to believe this, but I will call Esther Cody to join us at our table today.
Yes.
So we do this every year, but...
Why am I the only one sitting here?
I don't know. We do have, we do have a few others to recognize, but they couldn't join us tonight, so we'll start with you.
We could have rescheduled.
Oh, no, you're in the hot seat.
I am, I really am.
So we always ask our departing teachers to tell us the name of a book that they would like to leave their legacy in their current school building. Would you like to share with us the book that you chose?
I did. I chose "After the Fall: How Humpty Dumpty Got Back Up" by Dan Santat. And it's a, it's a spinoff on Humpty Dumpty. And the book is all about determination, perseverance, growth mindset. There's several themes in the, in the book. And the reason I chose that was because of COVID. You know, we all got thrown into a world that none of us wanted to go in, and the kids were nervous and scared, and I can't do this. I mean, my kids were, my kids were ready, because we had, you know, trained them on their Chromebooks, but just letting the kids know that it's okay, that we don't know how to do something. The most important part is to make sure that if you do fall, you get back up and start over again. The end of the book says, life begins after you get up. So no matter what you do, no matter troubles that you have, or fears, or sadness in your life, life starts again when you get back up and keep on going. So that's what I'm dedicating.
That's very touching.
I love it.
And those books have been ordered?
Yes, they have. Yep.
Really a cute book. The kids, the kids love it. And Humpty turns into a bird at the end, because that's really who he was. The story, let me just give you, this, Humpty fell off, and he didn't, he didn't, he didn't die, but he turns into a bird at the end, because that's what he really was inside. Do you see this? Okay, I'm not going to say anymore, because I don't know what they're doing behind me.
And Esther, you've been here your entire life.
I have been here my entire life. I've been here for 34 years as an educator, and I have been, I came through the system. So as a kindergarten student, right through graduation, and so when you add it all up, I guess I am the math teacher, it's like 47 years.
Forty-seven years?
Forty-seven years, and I'm, yeah.
Forty-seven years.
Forty-seven years out of 59, so this truly is my home.
And you live in, are in town.
And I live in town. I left for a short time, but then my dad had gotten ill, so I came back, you know, to care for him and to spend time with him, and this is where I have been.
That's great.
Forever.
So I think it's important also to highlight Esther's journey has been 34 years with students, many years as a union rep, 10 years as president for Unit A. So we've sat here with you many times, not agreeing.
Many nights.
A lot, many nights.
But always working together in the end for the betterment of the staff, which always was better for the students, too. And I truly hope that your, your staff recognizes the time, energy, and the heartache that you've put in for them, even behind closed doors with us, and...
It wasn't always pretty.
It does not go unnoticed. And you will be missed in the classroom, at our table, although you are a Blackstone resident, so you can...
Who knows?
They sit here.
I don't know.
Just saying.
See, you know, when you sit in these roles, would I ever run for office, I don't know. I don't know that I would get elected, because I was the union president, so they may think that I, you know, will just, you know, give the farm away. But when you're sitting in this role, you have to do what's best for the people that you represent, you know, whether it be on the school committee, whether it be in the union. I mean, we haven't always agreed, and we fought a lot, which was okay, because we always get to the other side. And, you know, we collaborated, we, you know, respected each other most times, you know, because it is hard. It's hard, you know, to represent everybody, and everybody get what they want, and everybody get what they need, but in the end, I think that we did a really good job.
I really, I really agree with you.
Yeah, I really do.
And like I said, your efforts and time, energy, dedication do not go unnoticed. Again, for the hundreds of first graders that have gone through your classroom, you've touched many, and I would say that is probably a countless number. I hope you have a very big retirement vacation cruise planned, or...
Oh, I mean, we are going to Alaska. Didn't turn, it wasn't supposed to be a retirement cruise, but I am going with, with my husband and a couple friend of ours, a land and sea tour, so we're leaving in July, July 7th, and we're back the 21st, and then I'll be back to the after-school program in August, so...
What do they call it? That's better than banker's hours?
I guess so, I guess so. But no, I really, this is my home. It was bittersweet. I mean, I made the decision right at the end. I mean, you know, everyone kept saying, when are you retiring? When are you retiring? I still don't know what I'm doing. I'm not ready, but it's, it's the right time for so many reasons. But we're just getting started here. I mean, I appreciate the time that, you know, I've had, you know, with the new administration, with Dr. DeFalco and Matt, and, you know, our principal, you know, Jenny, all the administrators, even you, Jill. And Christina, I think that we have a really good administration team in, in place right now. I've had the opportunity to be on the ILT team, on the Blueprint Committee, you know, and just seeing where this district is going, and the leadership that we have, bringing us, you know, into, I guess, the future. I'm just excited to see what will, you know, happen with these kids. I mean, I love our building. I mean, it's hard for me to walk away. I mean, kindergarten student right through, right through today. I think that we have a great staff. I think that we have an awesome principal. I think that we're, we're doing great things at the complex. Not that they're not doing things, you know, in the other parts of the building, but I just really love my school, and I just, it's hard for me to walk away. It's hard for me to walk away and not see, you know, the fruits of our, you know, labor.
Well, I will say that I, you are always welcome here.
Thank you.
And I think we'll see you again.
Oh, of course you will. Can't wait for Disney.
So we do have a Massachusetts certificate for you.
Oh, thank you.
I will present you. You said you had your selfie stick, though, are you...
I do, should I get it? Or is Jason...
I have a photo. I think he should get a photo of you with your selfie stick.
Am I doing this? Thank you.
You gotta get Jason and Esther together.
One, two.
Still living and breathing.
Oh, good.
This is gonna be, yeah, this is my candy. My little. Oh, my candy.
So we have a student to present flowers to Mrs. Cody, and she has a few words. I'm standing next to her, because she's nervous. You want to say something?
When I first came in your senior class, I was, my mind was, I hate math, and it was never going to change, but when I was in your senior class for longer, you definitely changed, but I can't see.
She has definitely done my... Thank you. Do I get to go back to my...
Thank you.
Can I take my flowers and run? Thank you.
Thanks, Esther.
Feel like the prom queen.
We should have gotten you a crown.
A crown. Sorry, Esther, we slacked off on our duty.
And for the retirees that were not able to make it this evening, just so everyone knows, we did check in with everyone. One had another, she sits on and chairs a board in a different community, so she's at a board meeting as the chair there. One's taking care of her grandchildren, so she's getting a head start in her retirement, and the other is vacationing in New Hampshire. But we did speak with all of them, and they were all really, just really honored to, to be able to come and do this tonight, although they weren't able to be here in person, they're here in spirit. We also ordered shirts for them. Esther, you'll get yours, I'll bring it to you tomorrow, that has a BMR logo, last name, and then the years of service on the back.
With the matching, with the matching jacket.
I don't know about a jacket, but just be happy with a T-shirt, all right? But the other retirees we had for Unit A, our teachers' unit, we had Stephanie Abizla. She retired in December. She was a middle school science teacher, and her book that she picked was "Fish in a Tree," so we have ordered that for our middle school library in her honor. And Renee Rousseau is another retiree. She teaches at the complex as well, where Esther is teaching currently. She's a fifth grade teacher, and she selected insignificant events in the life of a cactus. So I am very intrigued by the title of that. I'd like to read that myself, and that will be going to the library at the complex. And then Diane Derry is our Unit C member, who just recently retired, I believe from the high school, as a paraprofessional, is that right? Denise?
Twenty-four years, I believe.
Yes, 24 years. And so I know we have citations, Erin, if you want to just kind of show those, and then...
We do have one for each, each retiree. It's very lovely.
And so Denise, maybe if you want to take Diane's for hers, and then we could give...
Will you see her?
This is the...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, special delivery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the books are on order, and the T-shirts should be in by, actually, I think they're in, they're in now, but we have to pick them up. So they'll be in by tomorrow, so we can have them for the staff.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Our pleasure.
They will all be missed. We always have to replace, but you are irreplaceable. Moving on, we would also like to recognize our Assistant Superintendent, Matt Earnworth, who will be leaving us at the end of the school year. He was just appointed as the Superintendent of Athol Royalston, and you will also be very missed, Matt.
Thank you very much.
So a few words you wanted to share with us?
It has been a pleasure and a privilege to serve this community, and as Esther said it very well, the leadership here is taking this district in the absolute right direction, and I am very confident that you will only continue to see wonderful things happening here. And I am always but a phone call away, so anything that is needed, I certainly will always be happy to make sure that I am available.
You have been the numbers man, Matt, and we've definitely depended on you for that, so, and you've...
That's why I didn't buy a book to put into a library. I didn't want to spend the money.
Well, if you were going to buy a book, what would it be?
I didn't think about it.
You can't put Matt on the spot.
You can't put me on the spot.
Well, we appreciate your time. You will be missed as well, and this is his last meeting with us also, so he will not be with us at the end of the month, so thank you for your, your dedication to our district. We are in a better place because of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up, we have our Special Ed Parent Advisory Council here with a donation to Thank you for coming. If you could just introduce yourself and...
Well, actually, I'm excited to introduce them.
Okay.
So this is kind of a big deal for Special Ed. So for the last several years, we have not had a Special Education Advisory Council. We've sent out information, we got nothing. And this year, we're very excited to introduce Sarah. She is our CPAC Chairperson, President. She's doing wonderful work, and we know we have a lot of things we're going to continue to work on, but I just wanted to fill you in first, because I think she's also very excited to let you know her first, we've got two fundraising things going on that I'm going to let her share with you, but this year, for our Special Education Advisory Council, I get the pleasure of meeting monthly with the group. It's a small group, but I would say very dedicated group of people, of individuals. We prevented, we did presentations this year. They're able to give us some feedback of things that they're seeing in the school, and how can we address. We've talked about our programs with them, and they do have a mission statement that's part of their bylaws, that it's to work for the understanding of, respect for, and support of all children with special needs in the community. And this year, we have, I will say too, one of the things we've identified as a strength is our staff in the district has been really supportive, and they've actually given their time to come in the evenings to our Special Education Advisory meetings and doing some presentations for the families. So whether we had 15 or 16, right, or three of us one night that we were there, I mean, it's nice that we're starting to get more parent involvement. Some of the things we've done this year in September, I think we did a full program overview of all our programs. In October, I came out and introduced my assistant Jen Hernandez and all of our team chairs to the, to the PAC. In November, we had Allison Sullivan and Tara Franzosa came out, because one of the big things, I think, one of the goals for the PAC is to provide more activities for families and students with special needs that are more inclusive. So they were able to come out and talk about, one of their goals is making, starting with Millville Elementary School and making it a unified school, and partnering with the Special Education Advisory Council to do that. In January, we did an IEP presentation, how to kind of, you know, go through the meetings and what an IEP looks like. In February, we had our Special Education Team Chair at the high school came out, and she did transition meeting for our secondary students, what's next. In March, we had Allison Sullivan, who's one of our occupational therapists. She talked about the occupational therapist role in the schools and some sensory processing. In April, we did have our physical therapist come out, and I think it was me, Sarah, and one other person, but she talked a little bit about PT, and she actually made us get involved with some of the kind of activities.
We did the yoga.
Yes, we did. Yep, not the full yoga, but we did a few little things. And then in May, we presented a 504 training, so, and I know June, they recently had their elections, but Sarah is our, you know, Chairperson, President, moving on for the next year, so we're really happy to have that. I know she has some news about some fundraising and some more fundraising.
So thank you for the introduction, Joe. It's been a pleasure working with Joe and having a guiding light through it, because none of us knew what we were doing. We just knew it needed to happen, and it was a need in our district. So we're very happy that we're finally organized and moving in the right direction. In order to move in the right direction, though, we need some funding. One of our fundraisers is a shoe drive, which I'm sure many of you have seen the flyers come through emails and the boxes at each of the schools, and also the town hall. So we thank everybody for their support in that, and continued support, because it goes for another two weeks. Another fundraiser we did was the Blackstone Police Department graciously offered to split proceeds of the sales of their autism awareness patches between our CPAC and also the Doug Flutie Jr. Foundation. And I'm so pleased to say that sales were very successful, and Sergeant Kevin Luis presented a check for $650 to us, which is excellent. These are the patches that they sold. They actually do still have a couple available at the police department, if you're interested. I'm here before you this evening, because according to Massachusetts state laws regarding CPACs, any donations to our CPAC must be presented and accepted by the school committee. We do have an established CPAC account that was formed many years ago with the approval of this board, that the check will be deposited into. So I humbly ask that you accept this donation on the CPAC's behalf, so that we may continue to build the CPAC and expand our role in the district. I look forward to attending more school committee meetings and fulfilling the CPAC's mission of advising the district regarding the education and safety of students with disabilities.
Thank you very much.
And if anyone has any shoes, feel free. There's a box in every building, and Sarah does pick them up on a weekly basis, so...
So that account is still available for...
Yes, it is. When they have a treasurer, we've, that's all been taken care of. She is now, you know, on that. We went through all that paperwork, we're all set with that, so the account is ready to go.
And the check is made out to the right name for that account?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the donation from the Blackstone Police.
Some of...
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Tammy, and second by Dan. Any other questions or comments for...
You mentioned that there was one at the town hall?
Yes.
In both towns, or just Blackstone?
I reached out to Millville, and I was never granted permission, so it's only in Blackstone, unfortunately. So there's one in the main Blackstone Town Hall, and one in the senior center in the basement, but unfortunately, Millville didn't get back to me with permission. But I did reach out to their select board, just as I did Blackstone, same, same venues, but unfortunately.
Thank you for joining us. All right. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the donation? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to seeing you with your further fundraising.
Yes. Have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and last piece under school committee items is our Unit A contract approval. We're happy to have a contract that the union did ratify this week. It will run July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025, and Jason has a few highlights of our contract.
Sure. So some of the pieces that we were able to bargain into our next three-year contract, we needed to update our, some of our rubrics. So the rubrics that we use to evaluate our staff with, we had to update those, so we agreed on new updated rubrics for our coach, for our instructional coaches, for our teachers, and for our nurses, OTs, PTs, meeting occupational therapists, physical therapists, nurses, all of our support staff that work within our Unit A bargaining unit. So we were able to update that, which is great. You're already aware of this one, because we've approved the calendar, but we now will have our first day with staff the Monday before Labor Day. So that Monday and Tuesday, the week before Labor Day is with staff, Wednesday, Thursday with students. That part, I know the committee is aware, but we did have to negotiate the start of the year. We also have approved content lead teachers for the high school. So we have eight total. That includes Special Education, Student Support Services, English Math Science, Social Studies, et cetera, so that there are essentially department leads for each one of those areas that will now comprise or make the school's instructional leadership team. So that's all been formalized with the additional time that's needed for that work, so we're very pleased about that. On the insurance side of things, starting the school year of 2324, so not the school year, but school year 2324, we will be paying one rate for insurance... year, but school year 2324, we will be paying one rate for insurance, and that is the HMO rate. So as you're aware, the 75%, 25% split, the district pays 75% of the insurance. We will only be paying 75% of the HMO rate. If you opt for PPO, the employee will then pay, will pay the entire difference instead of 25%. So that is another piece. And for our OPEB fans, I hope everybody's listening to this, our Unit A employees will be contributing $5 a pay period, which should equate to at the end of our fiscal year, about $20,000, that our Unit A staff will be contributing collectively to our OPEB account, which is a nice start. That on top of the $50,000 that we put in based on our E and D, what the towns are contributing, I think we're going to be off to a really good start with our OPEB funding. So we're very pleased about that. And then the increases were 2.75% in year one, 2.75% in year two, 2.75% in year three. And then our stipends are different. The stipend amounts are 1% in year one, 1.25% in year two, and 1.25% in year three. So those are the headlines.
That sounds like a very successful bargaining contract. Obviously, we're on the financial side of it, so some of these will make more sense as the year goes on. The insurance piece is really big for us, and the point of that is not to, not offer it for our employees, the PPO, but hopefully get everyone over to the HMO because it is just more financially reasonable for us. Thank you very much for doing that. So we do need to approve the Unit A contract as presented to us, as the union has already ratified it. So I'm looking for a motion to approve Unit A contract for July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tammy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Erin?
Zee.
And any other discussion or questions for Jason about the contract?
I'm really excited about OPEB.
You chime in. I was going to chime in on the OPEB.
Go ahead.
It's been an ongoing battle. So, in my experience as the town, there's been brought up a Mr. Watson, as we know, has been beating that drum for several, several years. And I just think it's important, if anybody's watching this at home, that that's a generous contribution from Unit A, because they are not required to give any. It's the total responsibility of the towns to contribute to that in the original agreement and our new agreement. And it's just nice, in a cooperative spirit, that the district and the administration worked to show the cooperation that the school was willing to give back to the towns to help support this whole operation. So, thank you.
I agree with that. If someone could contact Mr. Watson and let him know.
I told him already.
All right. So all those in favor of approving Unit A contract as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and that is unanimous?
I'm going to hand, pass around the signature page, and then we'll have the Unit A sign the.
Thank you. That will be attached to a permanent copy that is kept in Jason's office.
And then we'll upload the new one for online.
Perfect. All right, over to you for a report of superintendent.
Awesome. Oh, do you want to do that?
All right, over to consent agenda. So we did move our school committee items up to, actually to let Mr. Schaefer get to his fifth grade band concert. So we still have consent agenda A warrants and minutes of meeting for May 12. I just need a motion to approve consent agenda A.
Second.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of consent agenda A?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Then we will move to public forum. Sometimes.
We're almost there.
Sometimes. And report of superintendent.
Thank you very much. No worries. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on my report this evening is an introduction of Mr. Yoder, if you want to join us at the front table here, and Ms. Foulas, if you would like to join him, please. I have the pleasure this evening of introducing our brand-new, newly minted athletic director, who will be joining our high school staff as also a history teacher, which we're really, really excited about as well. And so Sam joins us from Southbridge Public Schools, so we're happy to scoop him up, where he currently is also a teacher and an athletic director. And I think it's the same conference, actually, right? Or similar?
In the Worcester County.
Different. We play each other sometimes, but different conference.
Yes.
Great. So it's good that you know that, and then I can screw that up and you can correct me. You should know more about it than I.
And what is your last name again?
Yoder. Y-O-D-E-R.
Thank you.
Amish. Long time ago.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Yeah, well, I'm glad our logo's a horse. I mean, I know we're the Chargers, but changing logos and names has been a big hot topic, so we don't have to worry about that. That's good. But I'm excited to be here in a more stable, supportive district where I think I can help you guys get a lot done in terms of athletics. So I'm very happy to be here, and I want to thank Jason and Jill for taking me on.
Excellent. You're going to be a busy man. You have a lot to do.
Yep.
So I'll add to that, that you say supportive and anxious district, because we do have a lot of work to do in the athletic department, and we're very hopeful for your direction.
Did they warn you that almost all of these members are very, very solid athletic parents?
My ship has sailed, but I still very much care about that tennis court, Matt.
Getting done.
I felt a lot of warm weather this last week.
Lot of rain.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I was also the boys' tennis coach this spring, so.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, I think regular communication is super important. I don't officially, I'm not a year-round employee, but I'm always available by phone or email.
Yeah, we'll talk tomorrow.
Now that everything's done.
I'm sure that'll get sent out, but always feel free to call me.
We didn't know beforehand, but we actually have several people that we have the same circles in. So he's got a little background on me. I've got a little background on him. So this will be a good, this will be a good partnership. I'm very excited to have somebody also who's coming in, who has done this, and knows the other athletic directors, and he'll be in on the 21st to kick it off, so.
And that was something about Sam that really, that really struck me when we had interviewed and had a nice conversation, was the energy and the enthusiasm and the ideas, and that, as our committee knows, is so important because we are going to breathe a whole new life into our athletic program, and are really ecstatic about doing that. And Sam, I think you're really going to bring that energy, that vision, that fire that we're looking for. And so I know that, to me, that was something that really, that really stuck out as a huge asset that you'll have to bring forward to our system. So I couldn't be more thrilled that you're joining us. And you're very good in the classroom. Just so everybody knows, Ms. Foulas had the students evaluate our finalists for the history position. They watched, the kids watched the model lessons, and they were very clear with Ms. Foulas that they thought Mr. Yoder was definitely the direction to go.
Relatable and the way to go.
And felt that, so not only on the courts and fields will, I think, he deliver, but in the classroom, he'll also be delivering.
And I felt very relieved because then I could do two for one. I'm not going to lie. I had no influence. The children were actually very keen, and in the future, I will continue to do that because they pulled no punches.
Yep.
You know, they were A and B-ing, and it was, it was great.
They were pointed with their feedback.
Yep.
Well, that means a lot, and part of the reason I took the position is because I don't want to leave the classroom completely, you know? I love what I do, so I'm really excited.
Tim?
Could, Jill, I think this is probably to you, but how does the, how does, you know, part-time AD and teacher work? Is there time built in the day for him to do his AD stuff?
So there will be.
To reorganize the buses and all that stuff that happens?
So there will be one prep, three US history ones, which is, Sam identified that as his strength. It's also my favorite area of history as a urban history teacher. And so there will be ample opportunity to make sure that everything, there will be time, obviously, if he's got classes in the morning and he's got a DVC meeting or something like that, but we will be able to handle that. And his office is only a few doors down from his classroom, so. But he's got two separate spaces, too, to make sure, we just talked about that, to make sure that he can, he can be a teacher and he can be an athletic director, and it's not cloudy the same space, which I think is going to be really important.
I'm a big fan of an internal. I think you just, the heart goes into it a lot more, a lot faster than when you're in the building and you're with the athletes. I love that.
I just, and I just said.
It's an added bonus.
So Sam just said to me that he's going to be in the district on the 21st. I said, well, we happen to be having an extended advisory activity. You know, if you're done with HR, come over. And his response was, I'd love that. Like, so that's, I think he's got high energy with Keith and myself, and I think he will match that. So that's, no pressure.
It's going to be a nice team.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Any other questions for Sam?
I already pointed the gentleman out, so I'm sorry. I have nothing to do with that.
Should have brought a notebook.
That's okay. I got it.
Well, you want me to?
Sure, I'll go first. The, so going into, it's the end of the school year, the kids are going home. The fall sports, so last year, our cross-country team was almost non-existent. We had two or three runners on our boys' team and maybe two girls on the girls' team for the varsity level. So no JV. We did have a middle school. They fielded a team, but our numbers in cross-country really dropped, and I'm curious if, Dr. Tifalco had mentioned he was considering starting a running club.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're doing it on Wednesdays.
You're doing it?
Yeah.
You've got some kids?
I hope.
So, you know, so my son is seventh grader, middle school, so he, he's got a small group of friends that are running. But you need five runners to score in the meet. So, you know, like some type of recruiting or, you know, just trying to find kids that might be interested?
Yeah. So we have these issues in Southbridge a lot with numbers, and it helps that I'm in the building because I do a little bit of recruiting on my, you know.
That'd be great.
Just running the classrooms and helping to play. But you also need a dedicated coach. I don't know who the coach is now, but you know.
We don't have a coach yet, or you just haven't looked into that yet?
We have, well, we'll have, we have to see what, who's coming back and what that we have. We do have one teacher who's actually in the building, who has done, who has done the work in the past, yep. I will also say that we will also have a little bit of a captive middle school audience with our eighth grade academy. We'll be in the building for the first two days. I know your son will participate in that, so in the first two, the two periods of the day. And so I'm hoping, from the feedback that I've gotten, particularly from doing those interviews with those kids, they're definitely looking for that sports angle. So I'm hoping that piece of that will help with that.
So I, my thought process is that, you know, runners, the cross-country team, the runners, they tend to do very well academically.
They do.
Just, it's just a good outlet, and we just need to.
I think, well, personally, I don't think running is fun, and a lot of kids don't. But you need a coach that's going to make it fun.
Sam, Sam, time out.
He says that he doesn't have. Sorry, I didn't tell you that part.
Maybe you want to give him a heads up.
No, but still, you need a coach that's going to make it fun. So I think that's, step one is find somebody. Good.
So in the interim, you know, even if you don't have a coach picked out and, you know, we got to.
Move the numbers, yeah, because we don't want to lose the program.
We're doing, I'm doing my best with my, just my son's contacts and stunt group chats, and they're already running, so.
Another thing I did in Southbridge was encourage kids who got cut from other sports to try something new, like cross-country or soccer, you know? So there's a lot of ways to get the numbers up.
Yeah, it's not just for the most talented athletes. It's for everybody.
Oh, yeah.
I did run my senior year. I just want to talk about it.
Just for the record.
Just for the record.
Perfect. Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
So I have lots more to talk about with sports, but I'm just going to stop there.
I'll invite you over on the 21st.
Can you just tell us a little bit about your background? Your, like, your playing or in coaching and?
Yeah, I'm a sports guy. I played at, only name is Division One, or it was Division One High School in Worcester. Now it's St. Paul's. I played at Framia State, played soccer and basketball.
Excellent.
So I've always been, you know, playing. And then I went to Framia State for education, thinking that, okay, it's a perfect way for me to do a couple of things I love at the same time. So I started off coaching and teaching. And this past year, they said, hey, you've done a good job. I think you can do AD and down here.
Excellent. Good for you.
Yeah, thanks.
And the last thing is, I have to say, I'm trying to get some interest. Vanessa, six years ago, got permission from, her daughter and my daughter went down and were at the lunches at the middle school when they were trying to get volleyball off the ground, and look what happened six years later. What would we have this past year? So it paid dividends. So that was one thing that she did to try to really get, get it really moving in the right direction.
I will say that we've sent our soccer, our soccer team, our football team has been down. They do do a nice job, the relationship of doing that, because we have that, if, you know, so I agree.
Super important.
Is it a conflict of interest if you were to be a coach? Is that, like, not allowed?
Me?
He's going to do the pre-workout.
So I can tell you, I was a principal in Southbridge at the middle school, and so I know quite a few individuals that have worked with Sam who just speak incredibly highly of him. One was my administrative assistant, who's still there, who loves Sam dearly, Donna. But when I was there as a middle school principal, I actually did coach the cross-country team, because as a principal, I had a little more time. Like, I could do that, cross-country and track, but, yeah.
In the conversation, it just sounded like you had all the right.
I love it.
Not the time.
He enjoys running.
You all keep me very, very busy.
His son also runs, and he doesn't have the time to coach him. You coach him every weekend.
Yeah, I try, yeah, if I can keep up with him now. But, yeah. I have some very demanding bosses that keep me down.
It's funny that I said I don't like running.
You picked the wrong thing to say.
It was meant to be. It was totally.
And alls I had was, I had no idea who Sam was when I was walking in. We were walking in together, and just, just a good sign for his dedication is that he's missing his golf league tonight to be here and present in front of us.
I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
Mr. Ducharme would not have done that.
That's why he's not here.
Yeah, bummer, but, you know. You got to do what you got to do.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, it's very nice to meet you. Any other questions? We're very excited to get you in and, and busy.
Yeah, I'm going to need some purple tops as well.
That's okay.
We have a lot of them.
Purple everything.
You're not far behind.
Thanks, Ms. Foulas. Shifting gears, we are going to hear a very brief update from Karen on our COVID handbook. There was just a couple of small quarter turns we have to make, really just loosening of our protocol. So in your packet, you have a copy of what Karen is going to just briefly discuss specifically. The language in red is what has changed. We didn't put the entire handbook in there, because you all have seen it quite a few times, and it's online, but we just put in the red language, which is what's.
Hi, everyone. So, yes, we're talking about close contacts. So about a week ago, DESI announced that unvaccinated, non-school, asymptomatic students no longer needed to quarantine, as long as they remain symptom-free. Unvaccinated, asymptomatic staff still do need to quarantine. This only applies to students.
Positive or close contact?
Close contacts, yes.
So positive, asymptomatic, still?
Positive, you're still out for, for the five days or minimum of five days. Positive, you're still out for the five days, or minimum of five days, and then it's based on your symptoms when you can return. So this is for close contacts that are unvaccinated, asymptomatic, and have non-school exposure.
You know how I feel about this, Karen, with the eye roll.
So, they now, like I said, can remain in school. So I just added the section of number four stating all of that. And they do need, like the vaccinated, close contacts, they also need to mask for 10 days from their last contact with a positive individual. And that language is also reflected in the close contact protocol and the protocol summary.
Any other updates that you can see coming before?
Well, Desi did announce today that there's another webinar on the 13th, so I have no idea what they're going to throw at us then.
You just can't wait.
It would be nice if they would just let us finish the year.
Yeah.
For goodness sake.
But-
All right. So all the updates are in here as needed, and we just need to approve the COVID-19 handbook update as noted. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Tammy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. Any other questions for Karen or comments before voting? Okay, all those in favor of the COVID-19 handbook update, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm standing.
Okay. That motion is approved with one abstention. Thank you for your time and keeping up with us.
You are very welcome. And if there should be any other changes, then I will be seeing you on the 23rd.
Thanks, Karen. The next item is a discussion on school safety. I just want to run through a few different pieces. So the recent situation in Texas, which was incredibly tragic, and we know, and the situation in Buffalo before that, which obviously was not a school setting, and frankly, the few we've had since the situation that happened at Uvalde, makes myself and our leadership team feel more and more and more certain that everything we have done up to this point is the right work. It's not work that we enjoy doing, but it's, I think, what we need to do, unfortunately, at least for now. So I just wanted to take a minute to talk about a couple of things, because we have a community drill tomorrow, and I know that we've talked about it a few times already. We've sent multiple communications out to families, and the police chiefs are sending out a reverse 911 today. I know that Blackstone was set. I wasn't entirely sure if Millville was able to get out because of their regional dispatch. They weren't sure either. But I did send to both chiefs the information that we sent to the community, you all had on my Sunday morning update. It was that same language that they had it. So, that being said, just to remind the public or anyone that's tuning in, we do have our community response drill tomorrow at the high school. It's going to go into effect at 12:30 tomorrow afternoon. We will have the police chiefs, myself, our members of our leadership team. I've actually also invited our superintendents in our region and any of their SROs to join to just see, right, our piece, if we can give back in this way to help keep all kids safe, then we need to do that. So we've invited folks to come in and just observe, to see how it goes. So we'll be meeting at 12 to just do one more run-through. And just so everybody is aware, we're not referring this as an active shooter situation. There's no sound effects, there are no actors. We're not going to the nth degree on this and trying to rattle the cages of our staff and students, that's not the point. When you have a fire drill, I think, Jill, you had a great analogy this week about, well, when there's a fire drill, you don't put a fake fire in the building. Like, you just calmly respond to how you're gonna respond, and that is what the drill tomorrow is for. So we can just calmly respond to how we would respond. And so there will be a very short scenario, essentially four different phases or steps in the scenario where there's an intruder in the building. And that's the language we're gonna use, and we're just gonna calmly read the scenario over the PA system. With the end game being giving all classrooms, staff and students, an opportunity to exit the building and to go to the reunification site. Jill PG is our commander of the reunification site, so she's in charge of that site, and getting things under control, attendance, and everything in order and in place. And we've gone to great lengths to make sure that each one of those sites is prepared and ready with what we're referring to, these kind of go-bags that have student attendance, that have Chromebooks, we're putting a Wi-Fi device in there, they have walkie-talkies, they have tourniquets, first aid kits, toilet paper, anything that we might need in that situation. So tomorrow will be very calm, a very slow, you know, kind of practice drill on how things are gonna work out. And then we're going to go back to the high school, and we're gonna split the students into small grade-level groups, and we're gonna debrief with them. What worked, what didn't, how did you feel, what do you need? Did you see any, you know, any kind of, any blind spots in what we did? And then on Tuesday, June 14th, we've scheduled an after-action debrief with all of our local law enforcement. Erin, I know you came to the last meeting, and, which was, which was great, so you could get a really good sense of what was going on. So that same group of individuals, again, local law enforcement, law enforcement officials, excuse me, school officials, will be meeting to process through, like, what worked, what didn't, so that we can fine-tune things and get better with that. So I just wanted to mention that again, as a reminder to folks. But there has been a recent piece of research that was published about how not to prepare kids. And I feel very good about the fact that the way we designed our drill is in direct alignment with what to do. And so I just think that's a testament to the team that put the plan together, that it does fall right in line with what we should be doing. Because believe it or not, there is a wrong way to do this, and we certainly don't want to do that. That's one piece. The second item I just wanted to mention, we've spent a lot of time talking about what we refer to as the humanware side, like all the trainings and the drills and the tabletop exercises. But we also, just to remind the community, we have put a significant amount, the school committee has put a significant amount of resources into our hardware. So things, just to remind everybody and those that are tuning in at home, things like the safety vestibules in each one of the buildings. It's that double buzzing mechanism, the key fob system, the camera systems that are wired to the main offices and to the police department. Those are significant increases in what's called hardening any public space, like a school. And, and of course, you're aware of the laminate that we put on all of the glass in the front of the buildings, the safety laminate, to hold the glass in place. So the school committee has invested a ton of resources, rightfully so, I think, into this work. So I just want to remind everybody that we've also done the hardware side of things, as well as the humanware side of things and getting people ready. And again, it's not to panic, it's just to be prepared. And then the last part, I just, you know, I wanted to just put out there that we currently have, because I know this has been a conversation as of late, but we currently have one full-time school resource officer for all four buildings. We do have an SRO of sorts in Millville, but he, and does a wonderful job, by the way. It is very, very reliable, but he's more, he does more of a, like a patrolman, and is there for arrival and dismissal. And if Anita arises and he's in the area and it's something he can get away from, he'll leave and come to our meetings and our drills, and he's been, you know, a great addition. But I wouldn't say we have two full-time SROs, right? We have, we have Officer Loudon, who, this is his job. He covers the schools period and the end. This is what he does, and has done a tremendous job with that. And then Officer Gould is our, our SRO of sorts from Millville, who does a great job when we need him. But he's not there all the time, because he's got a patrol, right, that he's on, which we understand. So I just wanted to put that out there, so the community's aware that for the four schools, we do, we do have some police presence. We have one officer that covers the four buildings.
I just want to add to something you just mentioned about all of the hardware. The safety vestibule, the key fobs, the cameras, and the laminate on the glass has been a very slow process for us. I'm very glad that we can sit here today and say we have that, but since 2012, which was equivalently heartbreaking, you know, heartbreaking as Uvalde in the past two weeks when the Sandy Hook shooting happened, I don't feel like our district did, took a lot of action. I think we took some part-time people and put them sitting in front of the building at the door for the, for the rest of that school year. So I am very glad that we have it 10 years later, and I believe the key fobs were here before you got here and everything else has been, because you have brought it to us. Same thing with this drill that is being held tomorrow. I think it's going to, it's not going to go unnoticed in our community, but everyone's going to assume we're doing it because of what happened two weeks ago, and that this has been in place, this has been a work, a work in progress since before COVID. The kids had started this process in the classroom the day before they were sent home in March of 2020. And we're getting to this drill tomorrow, only for our high schoolers. And so many things could have happened, even in between that time and this. It's definitely going to have to become something that's done on an annual basis, so the kids are ready. But here we are talking about making the kid, you know, preparing the kids, which is obviously everything we're hearing on the news right now. One SRO in our district is probably not enough, in my opinion. I, I, there were a lot of reports that came out of Texas in the very beginning that said the SRO was in the building, they crossed paths, and then that came out to be untrue, which did make me think about our scenario. Because being that we only have one, that one is handling other issues that come up within the schools, and probably finds himself out of the building, am I, or in-between buildings. So is he going to be in the right building at the right time?
He gets pulled, Officer Loudon gets pulled frequently for different issues in different schools. So he has offices in the secondary schools, but it's not uncommon, I'll pass him in the hallway at the complex, because he's working with the principal on an issue. So he's not here, or he's not at the high school, you know, and, so he is, he is often shifted around and across the buildings, between the buildings.
So I don't know about the rest of you, but in the last two weeks, you couldn't really watch any news without hearing pieces of it. Yesterday was even more heartbreaking to hear students, you know, testifying in front of Congress. But for me, a lot of key points have come out in the last few weeks, and you heard people say, we're sending, thoughts and prayers aren't helping anymore, we need policy and change. And I sit, I sit here and think about the work we've done in 10 years. And, and then I think about our last meeting when MASC was here, and, you know, he made a good point, and he said that we are a governing body. Our, our committee can make policy and change. And that was, that was before these things were running through my mind, and I'm like, why aren't we doing more? You know, I, I, what would it look like to increase the SROs in our district? Because I don't want to be the one sitting here saying, I didn't think that would happen here. I think everyone in Uvalde is feeling that, like, it wouldn't happen in our town, it's not going to happen here. We're already preparing, we're preparing the kids to fight back. And another statement that's been loud and clear in the past few weeks has been, the best way to stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. So how do we do that? To, until all of these big lawmakers in Washington can, because that's not even going to make change tomorrow. A gun law change is not going to change the safety in our schools on the next day. But we can change the safety in our schools and let the teachers and kids be at peace to do what they're here to do. So, I'm sorry, I know I asked you a question and didn't let you answer. What would it look like if we wanted to increase our SRO presence in our buildings?
I'd like to just ask also a question. What is the arrangement with that SRO? Do we pay the, that's provided by the town, so why, you must have asked for another, right?
So this, so a couple things. So the current school resource officer is paid for by the town of Blackstone. What's, what's interesting about it is what was done when this position was added, and this was quite some time ago, and you might have some history in this stand, but they actually took one of their patrolmen off the street. So they're actually, they've been short a patrolman X number of years, and they've had them in the building. And we've, we have a memorandum of agreement with the Blackstone Police that outlines, you know, like reporting line and all of that works, but then also that we provide all of the financial support for any training and, you know, resources and things that the individual needs, but that the town pays the salary of that. So right now, the town of Blackstone is short one patrolman on the day shift.
Because he's-
Because he's assigned here.
So we're not paying for them?
We need to change their math on how much they need for patrolling the town and how much our schools need it. Top priority should be our, the children, and one less police officer patrolling the street, I think in the town of Blackstone, we'd be able to handle that.
Yeah, and Chief, and Chief Gilmore has been incredible as a thought partner and as a resource with us, he has. He's been so great to partner with and is, I was saying to Erin earlier in the week, also is very creative, like, in trying to find ways to give us what we need. So he's been, he's been a really good thought partner on that. To your question, Erin, around the cost, for, so if we had one in every building, so if we had four, is that what you're asking me? If there was one in each?
I mean, how do you pick what building you're not going to put one in?
Right.
So I would say four.
So there, it's about $60,000 to $70,000 per officer. So that would, for another three, would be somewhere in the range of $180,000 to $200,000.
Yeah, so the world we live in, you can't put a price on-
No, sure. Yeah, I just wanted to give a sense of-
Yeah.
If I may.
If I may. So, so I was, so I was chairman of the Board of Selectmen when we advocated for a school resource officer. And at the time, that put us short three patrolmen, and it's not just three patrolmen during the day, it's a total of three patrol shifts. And I believe that it was Officer Nimsick, I think, was the first-
He started.
First, as part of a- School resource officer. So the town of Blackstone is paying the whole nut on, so to be clear, on the school resource officers. It was a dedicated school resource officer working directly in cooperation with the school district, under the direction of the chief of police in Blackstone. At the time, we were still, we were, we had another issue, we were, we were short another patrolman, and we had a recently made, a detective. You wouldn't believe how busy actually Town of Blackstone Police Department is with our neighboring city. And fortunately, the people of Blackstone don't hear about most of the work that the Blackstone Police do. So, and, you know, the salary may be $60,000, but there's probably another $30,000, $35,000 in benefits packages that go along with that. So the school district has, I think, back in 2012, as Erin, to Erin's point, we always think, you know, when this, well, they're not gonna get us, they're not gonna get us until they get us, you know. And, and when I went to go meet with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, when I went to go meet with the superintendent a couple of weeks ago, I realized standing outside when it was drizzling out, how well the security is just to gain entrance because I was standing out in the rain waiting to get buzzed in. You know, which is, I'm not complaining. It's a good thing. I was glad to. Unfortunately, you know, when I was going to the Kennedy School, the doors and windows would be open in, at the end of the school year to let fresh air in and, and things. So, um, and there is not, it's not a bad thing to not know where any, at any given time where that school resource officer is because it, it, I mean, a threat is a threat. It's unfortunate, but, um, I'm not against adding additional security in that manner, but it would have to be a, a big conversation with both the towns. And, and the share is gonna, would, it will, it'll come out now that the Blackstone has been paying the whole nut on, on that, out of the nut, out of the contribution to the district. This is out of the tax dollars, out of the town's budget. So.
I think personally, the right thing to do would be for us to foot the bill for that. But they, they would still have to remain officers of their, their towns because they need to have a chief, they need to have that training and that. But I think if it's something we would want in our buildings, that we would have to find a way to put that into our budget. And say, and, and not, and to make it happen for, say, first day of school, September. Say, we're going to have a resource officer for every building and we're paying for it. And they bring us the employee, they bring us the, the new resource officer. Because I think when we don't do that, it becomes held up in the paperwork on who's paying for what percentage. And, and then we don't have what we're aiming for here, which is security in the buildings. That's, that's how I would see it. Like it would become a financial responsibility to us.
But then goes back to the towns anyway, so.
Left pocket, right pocket.
It's really, yeah, it's really, I, it's really a lot more complex than we can do at this meeting tonight. Just, I mean, there's so many union implications. To Dan's point, that officer is in our building. So that means the town of Blackstone is then paying overtime for other people who have to cover shit. Like it's, it's not a $60,000 conversation. It's just not. And times four, I think. It's, uh, you know, are we cutting 20 teachers to do that? You know, I think that's a question we have to
We've already approved our budget for next year, so I think
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying whenever this, you know, as we flush this out, it's, it's a much larger, and, and I hear you're saying, Chuck, that, you know, you can't put a price on it. But we, we are budgetary people and we have to put a price on it. And four officers, and, you know, to Dan's point, like we have to get Millville involved. Blackstone's already fitting, footing the bill for the district that includes Blackstone, Millville. So it would be, as a Blackstone member, I would say unfair to ask Blackstone to give more until we get Millville.
Yeah, I think it would be unfair if we're not offering to pay for four, you know, equally.
Right. But I think that, that issue, Aaron, becomes, so you afford it one year and then you can't afford it next year. Then it's the town's union that then they, they have this person, they don't have a spot. You know, it's, it's potentially has a lot of
If I may, so, and we're also, you're also talking about a school resource officer, which we have one. If you're talking about additional security, that could be a conversation with the towns. That's not a
No, they have to be specially trained. They, they do have to have the resource, right?
To be an SRO, yes.
To be in the buildings.
But if you're looking for, because both towns, Blackstone and Millville both have retired police officers that do details and have all the training on things like that. So there's conversations you could probably have, the district, we could have with the towns on.
So I guess we need to talk about that as a committee. In what direction do we want to go, um, to continue advancing the security? Like I said, the things that are in place were very slow for what happened in 2012. It, five years later, we couldn't say we were in a better place. We can right now. But I don't think we should be sitting here in September and not have a better plan for security purposes. Because it's not happening fast enough. And I personally believe, and I, I know that becomes very political, that even if something changes in Washington, that's not going to stop the threat of, and the, the, the feeling of, you know, not being safe. And in school, the, the kids deserve safety. The teachers deserve safety. And I, and it's our job to make sure that they have it.
We won't get that from Washington. It's our job to get
No, it is. And even if they, these things change, it's not going to take the, the weapons out of those hands. And
Would the, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask you, in your talks with the police chiefs, has there been any talk about having, um, active shooter training during non-school hours, obviously? In which, you know, there's somebody in there and they come in and?
They've, so they've done that here. Yeah, they did it in this building. Uh, and they do the regional trainings. And then prior to that, they did one at the high school. It was like off hours, vacation hours, that kind of thing. Yeah.
Okay.
So we must be in discussion with the police already?
Well, what I could do
More meetings and
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask the committee. Does, would the committee like me to convene a meeting with the two chiefs together? And the three of us sit down and kind of hammer out different options or things
Start.
To consider and?
Or the, the SRO with a workshop with the school committee, he can put his input in and what, what, what we would like. So you can address, we can all address?
I think seeing where the chiefs would stand on even being able to make it available is important before we, I, I don't know. But I think there needs to be a, a fine timeline that when our doors are opening next, in the fall, that we, we've made a change somehow.
Time is of the essence.
Because it comes back to, to the very beginning of this Uvalde, Texas, Rob Elementary. Like if you listen to it, they say that he entered the building and he passed an SRO, which was not true. Because, and, and, but had it been, the story would be different. And, and I'm not saying that person's going to be in the right place at the right time. But if I was a parent of, of someone, of one of those kids, I would have wanted that person to be in that building. I would have wanted that story to be true. And I would have wanted someone to try to stop, stop it from happening.
So the discussions with the police chiefs, um, you know, so you're doing drills. But the, the reaction at Uvalde was, their, their reaction, um,
Being investigated.
There. So, you know, what is, are police department trained? What would they do? Would they go in? Would they stop the parents from going in?
When you ask the chiefs, because we've had these exact conversations with them and quite a few times, frankly, they've always answered with the same thing. First man there goes in. No questions. They don't wait for anybody. They're not waiting for orders from me. They're not waiting from, they go in and you run towards the gunfire, period, to end. There is no, you wait for 10 people and you get in a line and you march for, none of that. And both chiefs have shared that. And Dave Loudon and Scott Gould, our SROs, have said the same thing, that their training is, is exactly that. First one on the scene, no questions asked, you're running toward the gunfire and you take out the, the threat.
Good to hear.
That's it. And they even, you know, they even train us to not bother them. Don't bother them. If you're injured, don't ask for help. Just leave the SRO alone. Leave the police alone. They're going in for one thing only, and that is to stop the threat.
And, and whether we have, whether we can end up with four, there's still going to be massive amounts of people coming to help if something were to ever happen. But that one person, the, the good guy with the gun is going to stop the bad guy with the gun. That is, it's just sticking with me for, yeah, I, I actually asked Jason to put 21 chairs out today differently because I don't think the number, you know, when you think of 21, when we were at graduation the other night, there will be 21 miss, there will be 19 missing students when that class graduates. It's a big number. And it, one is too many. So what do we do to make a difference here? And, and just to ease the minds of the students and the teachers. It's our job. So I, I appreciate everything you and Matt have done. And a lot, I can sit here and tell you that it has been Jason bringing it to us. When you got here, you must have been like, why don't you have this? Why did we not have safety vestibules in Millville?
That was one of the first things that made us incredibly nervous, was direct access to kids and teachers.
I can't believe it didn't happen after 2012. But the committee never talked about it. Never. We never had a table, table discussion about it. We knew, you know, we knew that all the, they were going, I believe there were lunch ladies that sat at the front door and signed people in. And that ended in June. So it was December to June. But, and, and I really think everyone just said, oh, it won't happen here.
If I can, I'd just like to add, if you got, if, if you want this implemented by the beginning of the school year, the, the conversation with the chiefs is fine, but it's going to have to be had with the town administrators. These are all going to have to be funded one way or another. Through the, it's still going to end up coming through the, have to come
Well, I feel very strongly, and I know it would be, that it is, if, if it's something we want and want by then, we do have to find a way to fund it. Um, I know we have, that would be E and D because our budget is already set. We would have to say, Jason, we need to find this and, or fund it with E and D. And that would be a motion, uh, for this year. And then it would be something we worked into next year's budget. Um, because we're not going to find $200,000 by changing around what we've already put in place to start July 1. Um, and I, I am okay with that. I know we have the E and D and I know it's going for, to a good place for security. But that's where the conversation would, I think, I think we have to go to our town and say, we need this and we're paying for it. So how do the chiefs make it happen?
And, and the vestibules, I think you did those, some out of the E and D as well, right?
We did, yep.
But you presented to the, the towns as well. And I, I, I know that anything with the security of these buildings, I don't think there was any hesitation.
No, they didn't take a hand on it.
There was just no action, there was no
Right, right. But from the town's end of things? So you, there is an opportunity there, if there's a fall town meeting and things, to get that additional, you know? I mean, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying whatsoever. I'm just saying if we, if we want an action, we, you'd have to move pretty quick. And you got to get the town administrators involved because it's going to be town administrators, boards and selectmen's and the chiefs, chiefs of police. So I'd definitely, I'd definitely like to hear the assessment from our school resource officer in, in our Millville, as well as the chiefs of Millville. Because I know they're always in communication about the threats to the school. I know that for a fact. And, and, and how we are compared to other communities as well. And I know we're ahead of a lot of communities in the area as far as access to the buildings, communications and things like that. So that's all, that's all I have on that. Thanks, Aaron.
If, if, if the committee would like, I can start those conversations with the chiefs and loop in the town administrators. We could start as early as next week.
We need to make a motion for that or just request it?
No, I think if everyone's just, I think it's, yeah, if you want me to, because I'm not taking any action on any financial pieces. It's just like, you know, get the discussion moving and let's put some ideas together to at least bring forward, to talk about, yeah?
I think the majority of us would like to dive deeper into those conversations to see where we can be by the first day of school for
Okay. I will start those discussions.
Thank you. And thank you for that recap on, on where we are with school safety. It's important. And again, I just want to say it again. This drill tomorrow was already planned. I, I do think it's going to gain some attention just because of, but, you know, it was maybe two weeks before that we went to that meeting and you had it all planned out already, so.
May I also ask, is, is, would it be a bad idea to put out on social media that there's going to be a drill at a certain time or? Because especially with, in the light of the last two weeks. Um, because I don't know, because I think the police and the fire department, they do the training on the radios as well, right?
I got the town call for it.
Oh, you did? You got the call? So it went out?
The town call, yeah.
Did it, did it sound similar to the one I emailed out to folks? Did you guys?
I knew exactly what, you know, it was an automated phone call. Said some roads will be closed to the school and what to expect.
Okay.
Okay. That's good to know.
School committee member put it on the local communities pages or something that exercises.
Oh, I mean, it could be on our district.
Yeah.
You could share it out.
Yeah, do a safety drill message. I can do that.
Someone less controversial.
Because if not, Dan, you're right. Someone's going to say, what's going on on Lincoln Street right now? All the kids are walking down the street.
All the schools blocked off and this kid that, you know.
The school community got a couple of messages from you.
Yep.
Yeah, but the rest of the town, that might not be up to speed.
Yeah, you can put it on our Twitter, social media and Facebook page pretty quick. Just to remind, I love the drill. Okay.
He let us know when it goes up, we can share.
Absolutely.
On the 14 Blackstone community pages. The better, the much better, the very much improved page.
The best.
Crazy.
I will be happy to do that. Okay, we've got our marching orders
Thank you.
For next steps, absolutely. I just want to give a quick update on the family welcome, uh, registration center. This is just a revisit of the discussion and a reminder. We had talked, um, it was around budget time. It ended up being a budget neutral piece, which is great. But you might recall, we talked about putting together a family welcome center where we do one-stop shopping, so to speak, for registration. Uh, and for any additional wraparound family services that our, our community may need, our school community may need. Uh, right now, our, um, families that are new to town go to each school to register their students. And if, you know, you're a parent of three children, you're potentially in three different schools, telling your story probably six to nine different times because you're telling each of the admin assistants and then you're telling each of the guidance counselors onsite and then each of the principals onsite. Right? So what we are attempting to do is, um, take all of that out, stop the parent from having to share his or her story nine times, six times, however many times. Just go to one place, register your kids in that one spot and we can provide whatever wraparound services or direct connections to school, uh, school supports that they may need. Whether it's, um, special education, ELL, or social, emotional, behavioral supports. We can do everything in one place. Um, and so we initially were thinking we were going to try to do something in this building and set up the structure in here. What we decided to do instead was to move some of the couple of offices around, one of them is mine, um, in the central office area and create a family welcome center there. So in the superintendent, like reception area, um, where Stephanie is and Catherine was, was before, that would actually be the registration center. That will be staffed by Martha Vasquez, who does a lot of our benefits administration. Uh, but she has done this work before in another school system, a family welcome center work. She's fabulous at that. We want her to be our face. Uh, she's very, very good. She's also bilingual. And just does a great job with, with particularly our retirees, with our current staff. I know she'll do great with the kids. She's also a licensed teacher, just FYI. So she knows how to work with kids. Yeah, she's many, many talents, Ms. Vasquez. So, um, we would have her meeting, greeting and helping families register in one place. Uh, I would, I will move out of my office space and the district social worker will go in there. Uh, that is because if we have families that need that direct support, we have somebody on staff that can help them, that can help get them linked up right away so that we're not waiting three months, four months to figure out the needs that they have. We can actually help provide those services right away. We also have a lot of complex students with special needs that enroll in the district. And truly having that out in the building just makes it a little more complicated to get them the services right away. Oftentimes, there's multiple calls to Jill's office. Well, now this will be across the hall from Jill's office. So Jill and/or Jen Osorio can pop next door, help tease out the IP, make sure the services are in place and get all the information to schools. That way the parent's going to one place, just one, um, to get everything coordinated and set up. So, um, what we are going to do moving forward is we will start that process August 1st. So we will have the family welcome center, uh, registration, uh, piece in place for August 1st. And then all the registrations moving forward from August 1, um, on would be done at the family welcome center in our central offices. It's not a super unique model by any sense. We just haven't done it here. It's not a super unique model by any sense, we just haven't done it here. But a lot of systems have it, they have a registration center, it's, you know, and it's all kind of done in one place. So then the other part to that, this was something the school committee, I know, felt very strongly about, that I wanted to mention, was having our, what we call re-registration, so that every year paperwork, like, the packets that come home to families, that, you know, I know I get two as a parent, too, and it takes hours to fill everything out, to have that be electronic. So what we are doing, we've put all of those wheels in motion. As of September 1, all of our new registrations will be electronic. And we're only doing new registrations this first year, because during the school year, we get about 150 to 160 registrations. We want to work all of those kinks out. Before, we reregister 1,600, 1,700 families all at once. Half of those families have never even had an Aspen login account, because we don't use our Aspen system until usually middle and high school. So what we want to do is let's get all of our paperwork electronic and online for September 1 for new registrations. And then, starting the following school year, we would do all the re-registration. So when you're, you know, your son's going into ninth grade, you could do everything electronically. You don't have to get that big packet home, and you can just log into Aspen, fill everything out, sign off on everything, hit submit, and you're done. So we need some time. Frankly, Aspen is our student information system, and there, they cannot get fully staffed, unfortunately. So they can't even start working with us until the end of August on this project. We reached out to them about two months ago.
So our elementary students, parents will eventually be in the portal before they get to this building?
Yes. They would be in order for them to be able to log all of their re-registration paperwork. Yep. And again, there's just a capacity piece with that. Julie Wolford's our data specialist. She spends usually the first three to four weeks just helping families get on in an Aspen, and resetting the passwords, and helping them walk through that process. So it'll be good to kind of try this with the new registrations, and then to streamline the registration process itself, having one place, one process, one packet, one system. We haven't discussed this, I don't think, since February, so I wanted to just revisit it, see if there are questions, concerns, thoughts.
Seems like we're moving up in the world.
Yes.
Are we going to have a sign that says welcome?
We are. We're going to have a lot of signage, we're going to put a new sign in the front that, right now, it says, Blackstone Millville Regional Offices, or something, Central Offices. We're going to do a nice family welcome center sign. We're also going to have their own entrance. So if you look at where our central offices are, when you all come in, you tend to go in the JFK, and you buzz, like, through the double doors. If you look to the left, there's a side entrance that has a key fob on it, and it's already wired, that you can get buzzed in there. So we do some nice signage and some plants and things, so it looks very welcoming, so families know that that's where they would go. And they don't have to trek through the school and up the ramp and all of that, they would actually have it.
Oh, okay. I think I use the door you're talking about.
Yes.
Because I don't go through.
Is there a buzzer over there?
Yes.
Yeah. And you just take a left, right to your office?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's what I use.
Not in the driveway?
It's if you're looking at that.
Menin Street side.
It's on the Menin Street.
Oh, I didn't know there was a buzzer over there.
There is, yep. It's all paved, and it's all, oh, no, the other side, I'm talking to the other side of the.
All right, I'll have to do a drive-by.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the parent pickup is.
Right across from you.
Yep.
That's it, you're cheating, you already know.
It's the end of the road, right?
It does.
It's the end of the wing.
Yep. It's nice and paved and cleaned up nice over there, and so we'll put some signage, and then they walk in, and the office is right there.
So it sounds very professional.
That is the plan. We want to really, instead of trying to register in a main office with people coming in and out, and everyone's hearing your story, and you're telling it three or four times, and it's, we can't, we can't have that.
And forever, we've been hearing, why, why can't this paperwork be done online? That, you know, the four packets that come home, but.
Yes, so that we are moving towards. Unfortunately, for our current families, it's just going to be another, it'll be not this school year, but the following school year.
It is interesting to watch from times, a new family come in, and they get on Facebook, and where do I go for this? And then all the responses, well, you got to go here for this one, and you got to go here for this one, and here for that one, so.
You want to really professionalize the operation right from, right from jump.
Central registration.
Yep, right when you come in.
Perfect. Thank you for that organization. But where is your office going to be?
Oh, that's a good question. So I will be switching, I'm going to be switching offices with our district social worker.
I thought you were going to move into Thomas Cullen's old office.
That's the nurse now.
It was like, no, I think it was like, who knows what it is right now?
It's the nurse.
But I just remember when I was a kid.
Yeah, funny.
Where's?
We put the nurse.
Don't ask me why I wasn't visiting his office.
Yeah. No, so I'm going to, Sarah Rodrias and I are going to switch spaces. So I'll be, when you walk in up the ramp, I'll be to the right and set it to the left. Right near where your new, your individual will sit, the new assistant superintendent.
Your replacement.
Matt's replacement?
Yes.
Is that a new office, or is that Matt's old office?
Matt's office currently.
Oh, okay.
So then I can be.
Can you leave that nice and tidy when you go?
It already is.
I believe.
He's not going.
No.
Yeah. So that'll be just a couple of changes there. And then, the last item on my report is to discuss the lead planning, teaching, and learning coach. We had a preliminary conversation about it, but in your packet this evening, you have two items. The first is the job description, which lays out all of the responsibilities that this individual would be responsible for. One of the things that I want to mention with this, as far as the responsibilities go, this was built with Jill Pillo Galerani, it was built with the principals, and Carrie Purcell, which I just think is important, because again, the goal is for her to start backing out of some of this work. And as she always says, kind of working yourself out of the job. So she was very helpful in walking through this with me to make sure that we captured all the correct pieces of work. And then for the stipend amount, I'm proposing $12,000, which is for, it's a significant amount of work. It's another eight and a half weeks, which would be done in combination over the summer months and after school, during the school year. And so that is at the 35 an hour, thereabouts, it's very close.
And that money, you've already been able to pinpoint from other line items?
Yes. Yep, it is just a repurposing of existing dollars we have, it's not new money. And so what I would like to do, if the committee approves, is to be able to start a discussion with the teachers unit, Unit A, about this, and see where it goes.
So the parts of the job description that make it a lead coach compared to what we have as coaches? Number two, the purchasing, training, implementation of new instructional materials, who was doing that? Okay, just making sure. Right now, your coach, the coaches don't attend the district, the office leadership team meetings?
They, no, they come to a leadership team meeting once a month, but they don't go to the central office.
Central office.
So the, kind of the headline to it is coordinating the support for the coaches, helping principals and the coach in the building troubleshoot any potential issues, aligning and coordinating curriculum, instructional practices across the school system, helping to essentially monitor the data cycles that we're using at the school level, to ensure that our students in the, we call MTSS, but it's like the intervention, you know, model we have, our English language learners, but also our accelerated learners, those students that are going to that Grade Eight Academy, are getting what they need, are making the growth that they, that they need to be making. And that, we have some really tight coordination around that. Something that you're going to hear about at the next meeting as well, is our district blueprint. We are going to have in our next, with this next blueprint, quarterly blueprint meetings, where we're going to actually be looking at evidence of progress in our district blueprint. So this individual would be a key member in helping to coordinate that work, and making sure that we are staying on track with everything that we have set out to do in that next iteration of our district improvement plan.
So right now, the coaches we have are kind of assigned to grade levels and buildings.
Correct.
Will this person have an office somewhere? Where will they be, where will their main point be?
So they would spend half their time coaching in their building, and then they would spend half the time plus working with us with this coordination work.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the lead coach job description as written, the stipend amount of $12,000 to allow the superintendent to go into an MOU with Unit A on the stipend position. Looking for that motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Erin Z. Any other questions or comments for Jason?
This is funded through the addition, through the assistant superintendent's.
Salary line.
Salary line, I guess.
Yep.
So it's not additional money needed out of what we approved for next year's operating budget? Any other questions or? All those in favor of approving the lead coach as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, that's unanimous.
Thank you so much. And I'll give an update in terms of where that goes from here with the, with Unit A. And that concludes my report.
Actually, I actually have one question on that, sorry. Is the intent for the person to start this summer?
I hope so.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Which, you know, we know.
But you know what, great question, Tammy.
Couple of weeks away.
Because if, if there is a delay in this, the stipend would be prorated, just so everybody knows. Yep. So it wouldn't be the exact amount, it'd be less, but we hope it's going to be the full amount.
All right, moving on to the report of our business office. This will be the final report.
Well, hopefully not the final report from the office, but just from myself.
From Matt. We'll see a larger print in our future.
So the first piece on my report mentions the FY '20 audit. Ron, our assistant treasurer, was going to try to be here this evening, he was unable to make it to this meeting to give this update. He will, I believe, be present for the June 23 meeting. I can say that the FY, we are still a bit behind, given the circumstances of COVID and the timeline that the auditors needed to follow, so we were hoping to be caught up to speed with our audit, but we had our FY '20 audit finished. There, I can say there were no significant findings, so there were, there were no issues with the audit. And I did just receive the letter of engagement today that was signed to start the FY '21 audit. So again, we're still a bit behind, but we're trying to move quickly and catch up, so that we're not behind anymore. Any questions about that? I know it's not a ton of information, so probably not a lot of questions. The next piece in my report is the BIKO collaborative tuition. There is a motion that is included in the package. I'll give a brief summary, which is, BIKO is our Bi-County Collaborative. They work with us to provide special education services for students that get placed there. However, they're a collaborative, which means they're really part of our district, we're a member of the collaborative, so we help, Jason is on the board, and they oversee the running of this collaborative center. There have been some problems with the finances for the, for the program, and they recently needed to make the decision to increase their tuition rates. That being said, we had already budgeted for the tuition for next year, so when we came up with these increased tuition rates, we had to take a look at what we could potentially do to offset these increases, which were significantly higher than what we had budgeted for. In order to help address that, there is a stipulation that says that we are allowed to prepay tuition, if permitted by the school committee. And working with Jill PG, we identified two tuitions that we could potentially prepay this year that would offset any of the additional costs for the increase in tuition for next year. That money would be coming from the circuit breaker account. I can say that there is enough money in there to adequately cover that and more. That circuit breaker account we've referenced before is specifically for these types of reasons, where children may move in with significant needs, and we need to increase special education costs, or we might see some significant increase to a service cost. So we are asking to be allowed to prepay for these two tuition spots, whether it's any specific child or not, they'll, they'll give us the credit for BIKO, and that cost is at $105,436.80. This would require a vote from the committee.
So we have a motion here allocating the $105,436.80. School committee authorized the district administration to prepay BIKO tuition for two student placements during 2223 school year. Said prepayment shall be in the amount of $105,436.80. Second. Okay, motion made by Dan, and second by Tammy.
If I, if I'm discussing.
Just to spend an ongoing conversation, but any questions or?
So it was originally budgeted for $80,000, I think, just around that area.
The increase, you mean, that we had to close, is that what you're?
Yeah, I think it was like a 13% increase.
Yes, yep.
But you're, Jason, you're working with that group of people to?
I do have an update on that.
Yep.
Yeah. And so what we, just so, I'm glad you asked that, Dan, because I was going to share it at the end, I'm happy to do it now. So at the last meeting, we talked about the increase, the 12% increase that the executive director of the collaborative recommended. I did share it to the board, I voted no, I thought the increase was, was way too high, but it passed. At the, at the next meeting, the budget subcommittee for the collaborative did what we asked them to do, which was great. They went back, they looked at the organizational chart, they eliminated three different administrative positions, some administrative assistant positions, they did restore some of the paraprofessionals that they had eliminated, which I think is an important thing, because it's direct service for kids. And they rebuilt the budget on 190 students, because the collaborative is all about their tuition, right, that they charge districts. So with that, the budget that they put forward, that was voted on and passed, I did vote for this budget, had a deficit in it by about $450,000, but that still left 1.5 million in the collaborative's E and D, so to speak, it's called a different account, but it's like our E and D fund. However, we did discuss that all it will take is for them to enroll 10 more students, and that deficit's closed. We'll break even, without needing to borrow anything from the E and D fund and the collaborative. So I felt comfortable with that, I voted for that budget. But I will tell you, I think, and even better news, as of our April 1 enrollment at the collaborative, they have 208 students. So they budgeted with, for 190, they currently have 208, will lose about 26 to graduation, which is a good thing, right? And those seats, I'm sure, will get filled. So I'm saying all that to say, I actually think next year's budget, we will land the plane.
Will we see a 13% decrease?
We will not see a 13%.
It will forever be 13%.
It was 12, yeah, it was 12, but it will.
12, sorry.
That's okay. But I don't see us having a decrease in the future in that. But the budget should land this time next year, hopefully we'll break even, without having to take.
With your careful eye on how it's being spent.
So I will be asking to be on the budget subcommittee. This year, I served on the personnel and the strategic planning committee to help get everything kind of reorganized with staffing and where they're going next. I will ask to sit on the executive directors evaluation committee and the budget subcommittee. Just FYI.
Okay, so the motion is still on the floor. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Here. That's still you, Matt.
Excellent. So the next item in my report is the revenue report, which you have in front of you. As you can see, we're still collecting our revenues, we're still in a very positive place. We are drawing down on all of our grants, those last drawdown windows are, there was one drawdown in May, and there'll be a final drawdown in June, so we'll make sure that all of those are drawn down entirely. And we still have our Chapter 70 funds that are needing to come in. I can also say that we just sent out today to the towns, we sent their assessment letters for the FY '23 budget, which we want to thank both communities for approving that budget. And that went forward, and we sent those letters out this morning, actually. So are there any questions about the revenue? Similarly, in our expenditure reports, in both the general fund that you have and also the grant fund expenditure report, our expenses have been going as planned for the remainder of this year. If you look toward the bottom, the, if you look toward the bottom of the first page on the general fund, on the right side, you can see that we're still in a place where we're looking at about $750,000 in the black right now. We do still anticipate some additional expenditures, we're still closing out the books, so we're not going to have exact final numbers, but we're definitely in a financially healthy place so that we can start looking at what the committee may want to do with some of those funds, or as you mentioned earlier, the E and D that you were looking to put into the cost for security.
So Matt, this is the ending balance for this year, this isn't including what we already have in E and D?
Correct.
And does this 707,000, it does not reflect the 105 that we just voted for BiCo?
Correct.
That's going to be deducted from?
So actually, that's from the circuit breaker fund, which is a separate, it's a separate fund that is on the grant, it's on the grant expenditure sheet. Now, each year, we do, we show what we've budgeted for that year in the circuit breaker fund, and what we've expended for that year in the, from the circuit breaker fund, but that fund is, also has a balance in it that rolls forward consistently. The circuit breaker fund can accumulate indefinitely, it's not that it needs to be, you know, spent in the course of six months.
So even prepaying this $105,000 is not even affecting this 700,000?
Correct.
So we actually need to talk about that.
At the June 23 meeting, we have the small capital projects, the paving, playgrounds in the sidewalks at Millville, that we have to, we'll ask the committee to take some action on, so we can get that working.
You're on the same page.
Yep, absolutely. Can I, can I ask the, the BiCo, that 105,000, that's coming out of the, is that coming out of the 206, out of the circuit breaker?
It can, that 206 is part of the balance that is still in circuit breakers. So yeah, it would be.
Thank you.
If you notice, that 206, if you notice the totals in that entitlement and grant expenditure column, that 206 isn't added in, because it's a, it is actually just an entirely separate fund. The next report, are there any other questions for the expenditure reports? Next report on my list is the personnel update, which you have in your folder to be placed on file. There's one new update, and that's mine, but we discussed that earlier, I'm not, I'm not on that list.
I do have one question about personnel. Non-renewals, are they ready or are they out?
Non-renewals began to go out this afternoon, and they will be distributed, they're continuing to be distributed by the end of the week.
Because there is a timeframe right here, okay. Thank you, sorry.
No, that's a excellent question. Yep, we are well within the, we're in the timeframe.
Okay.
And that concludes the business reports. You also have the facilities update in your package. That first piece on the high school is that, that piece that we've spoken about, that we wanted to make sure that we got another estimate, aside from Riverdale Plumbing, industrial burner was just in, they took a look at things, and they're going to be providing a quote to Scott shortly. The irrigation systems that we discussed at the last meeting, we did get the filter installed, and all of the irrigation systems are running properly, and they're looking good, and hopefully keeping the fields in excellent shape. Dugout work continues, and there's nothing there about the tennis courts. No, the work was started, I know.
It says it on the next bullet.
No, I was joking.
Oh.
I just kind of wanted to skip over the tennis courts for my last meeting, but the work was started, however, again, we started running into rain and humidity, and they put a hold on it. We are anticipating, I believe Scott and I have discussed, quite frankly, we've gotten a couple of excuses, then there was an issue with pollen on the ground, which could be valid, so they were hoping, the pollen that they've seen in other areas where they put the final coating on, pollen was impacting its ability to adhere. So they were waiting for a, they were waiting.
Have you physically, or?
I've seen the tennis courts.
Scott, have you, they seen?
Them working?
Have you seen them here in the last few weeks?
Yes, no, absolutely. Scott has been there while they have start, they have started the work. And now that we had that lovely heavy rain just recently, there should be absolutely no excuse moving forward for them to finish the project. They will be completing the project.
How did, I, I've been wondering how these people get through a job in New England, if it takes them that long for one tennis court.
I wonder if they really do.
Like, how do they stay in business?
I wonder if it's that they have too many jobs and they keep pushing us.
That's why I asked if you've actually seen them.
But Scott has, I've spoken with Scott, they have been there, we, there is work that has been done, you can see, you can see the cracks that have been patched.
But it was like that.
Yeah, that was like forever.
It was like that.
It was like that for a while.
We'll give them a deadline.
Anyway.
That's a good idea.
It's got to be done by this day.
Could we make a motion to hold Matt's last check at the?
Poor Matt.
Nope, that's.
I'll make a motion.
Just kidding, Matt, just kidding.
I will be, I will be there. At the Hartnett, Jason mentioned earlier our commitment to securing the buildings and investing in the hardware. We had budgeted money for cameras to be spent this year, and we, it says that we have a quote, we got that quote, we are paying for additional cameras to be installed at the middle school. In fact, we are, given the financial circumstances, we're paying for a few additional cameras, we have 14 new cameras that are going to be installed into the, into the middle school.
Will these be viewable at the police station, like the high school?
Yes, they're all tied into the same video surveillance system. And last but not least, as we know, we're finishing up the move between the MES building and the complex, and second grade is going to be moving, and we have everything booked and scheduled for the 28th and the 29th of June. It's a significantly smaller move than it was this past summer, so it, they have said it should only take a day or so. And the crates and the boxes have all been delivered to the complex, so that teachers, as they finish things, they can start packing up.
It was a very long process.
Three years, five, four years? Some very positive things are coming out of.
Six years.
The Ujio agreement.
Yeah, it's.
Very positive.
Six or seven years since the very beginning.
Beginning of that.
And I think that had to go slowly, unlike other things. I think you had to kind of.
Let it build itself out.
To get some buy-in and.
It had to fail before it succeeded.
Reduce stress.
Yeah. It's been, it's been great.
But I even heard today that Amanda came home and said that they'll be able to have fourth grade band next year, because?
Yes, we are working on a fourth and fifth grade.
Because the kids are all together.
Yep.
So I was like, wow, never saw that coming out of the regional.
Trying to put life in the athletics, we're trying to keep the bench strong.
But that helps with crafts, that helps with, right.
Yep, we're trying to get a lot of bites of that apple with this.
This thing says work on the dugouts continue, what exactly is?
They still need to put the slab down and solidify that. Scott, it's, they've been waiting till we could get more guys to do some overtime to do that work.
So that's in-house?
It's in, it's being taken care of in-house at this point. Got awful quiet just now.
Right, air conditioning, can't shut off.
Everyone's intently listening to your last words.
Well, actually, my last words, are there any questions on the facilities report? So my last words were going to be, we also have facilities used requests, but I'm not the most qualified to speak to this at the table, so I didn't know if Mr. Dunton wanted to speak to this, but you have, we have a request just for use of the track and field equipment and the field space, which has, should not pose any problem, and there should not be any charges for this usage. It just needs approval to move forward.
You've, you've had to request this in the past, too.
Did I?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, we had to make sure that you had access to the shed with the mats, and you need all of that listed?
Something to be able to get in there and.
Yeah, the shed is a mess. So I, I know the, everybody's been under so much pressure, and, you know, even the teachers and the coaches and, you just need a, that shed needs to be emptied out.
We need a new shed, or we need a cleaning?
So I was talking to Matt before the meeting started, and he suggested, you know, like, Scott would be a good person to talk to, and maybe the coach, I'd like to try to get some discussion going on what we can do. So if we have a, a new school built in five, six, seven years, you know, I don't want the track team to, it'll just get, we, they need help now, even interim storage, some equipment, you know, where could we, some of the equipment is so dilapidated, it needs to be replaced, and then when you purchase the new equipment, you want to protect it and not let what happened to the previously purchased equipment. We just need to get more life out of it.
So how do we go about that, being that we have a change in command with athletic director, it was probably not?
It was not budgeted for, but I would say if, if Mr. Dunton wants to speak with the new athletic director and come up with some estimated costs for the equipment that you're looking at, and/or potentially some storage areas, that might be something that could be put into those conversations on the 23rd about how to spend some of the addition, you know, some of the remaining funds.
So the track coaches would be, you know, if they're going to come back and, you know, so they could play an important role in that, telling us, you know, from their point of view, what they need. But, you know, I, I'm a track official, you know, I'm a parent, I'm a coach, I'm a USA TF coach. So, you know, I just like, I live, I love it, and so that's why I'm like, super focused.
And earlier, and earlier I discussed that, he could, at, during school committee toward the end, he could raise it as something he'd like to be discussed and voted upon, maybe, and again, if that's not urgent right now, if the equipment is just deteriorating, like, it's still in okay shape, you may want to wait and then have E and D certified, and then the committee could potentially vote to purchase all kinds of new equipment and storage with E and D. But again, that's a decision for the committee to decide where.
On the budget.
Well, but we are in a unique position, we're at the end of our budget year, and sometimes that money can be spent without being on a line item, so it sounds like you have a better handle on it than the athletic director would have, or even the coaches, because they, and rightfully so, could have brought it to the attention of others, too. So the new athletic director will be in the district on the 21st. When will he have email?
He should, yeah, no, he should, when he does his onboarding paperwork. Yeah, it'll be set up then, yeah. They trigger everything at once.
It's just, it's unfortunate, because I think at the end of this year, we would have a little money to put into it, if we had a list of.
Sorry, I hate bugs, sorry. You just found my weakness, one of my many. Jill, where are you when I need you, this big moth just flew up here.
Hey, he's back.
Where is he?
He's over there.
I call Jill.
He's high office when there's a big bug in there. He's back with Harry Potter, he's hiding from the Harry Potter bugs.
I hate bugs, all right, sorry.
So maybe you can get a list together before the 21st, that at least on that day, it could be given to him, or?
Sure.
Like, what's the status of the actual structure itself, because it's.
So the track itself is fine.
No, 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 I'm saying the shed.
Oh, the shed. So the shed must have been built 20, 30 years ago, and, you know, they've painted it maybe two years ago. I mean, it's not a very attractive shed, I mean, it serves as a purpose of, you can, it's just packed, if you open the doors, you can't, you have to crawl over things to get in there, and.
We emptied it a couple of year, I mean, a couple now, right? Our kids, our older kids are out a little bit longer.
The high school team finished their season, and so it was just the middle school, so usually, like, the high school kids, you get 30 kids cleaning the shed, putting things away, can be done nicely. This year is a little different, you know, the, the high school is done, they're not going to practices anymore, the middle school has continued practicing, a small, a group of 10 kids who qualified for the state meet. So they're, you know, the rest of the team is done, the kids are qualified.
So it wasn't done as it has been in the past? The cleanup?
The cleanup's a little different this year, yeah. Usually you have the high school kids.
But, you know, it's just like at home, if there's not a place for it, it doesn't get very organized, so.
The mats.
Sounds like there's not enough room.
You have to take, so I did a couple of years ago where I drive around to the back of the school, take the big high jump mats, put them on my truck, drive around, open up the gates and drive my truck right up onto the track, all the way to the end, unload, then drive back. I didn't do any damage.
Oh, but you're the first or last one to drive up there.
Yeah, you've got a trailer on the track. Big truck had to bring that up there. So, you know, the, like, a Waynesville Christian, they've got, you know, little carts that they can lug the hurdles, you know, like, they have multiple carts with nice big wheels on them. We have like some little, like wooden square rails.
They just had a $5 billion renovation, just for the record.
But when is the last time, I can't tell you that any track equipment has ever come across.
But it's part of the budget, that's, that's my concern.
Douglas has metal storage containers, like, two or three of them.
But we have made one-time purchases, like, cross-country needed a new tent in a, in a certain year.
It's still in, it's in the shed.
We, but I'm saying, we can do that stuff, it doesn't, we don't have to wait to put it into a line item.
Yeah.
I mean, you could make a motion right now to say, want to allocate $5,000 to purchase new, but just, it isn't, it doesn't have to be a long process. There is, if, when the need is brought to us, parents can come and say, we need this, and we could do that, right.
I'll have a list put together.
Yeah. I think that since you're right in the forefront of it, that you would be able to do that. But in the meantime, we need to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the facilities request.
Second.
Okay, motion for the facilities request?
Yes, second.
Motion made by Dan, second by Tammy. I'm trying to say, so Chuck should abstain, since he's the one that's requesting. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed and abstentions? Chuck abstained, and that is approved.
And so concludes my report.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt, for your final report of the business office and facilities. Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, you will definitely be missed. Your organization, your micro.
Saving an ink.
Micro. Micro printing of the smallest numbers ever will be missed.
I will certainly miss working with everyone here on the committee, and I will miss the community. It really has, as I, as I mentioned earlier, it's been a pleasure working for the district. It's been a great experience.
And we wish you the best in Athol Royalston. I don't know if they know what they're getting.
Not sure how you, not sure how you imply it.
No, it's all good things. They don't know how lucky they are.
I agree.
So on to school committee forum. Does anyone have, we didn't have student reps today. Does anyone have any updates about anything good happenings? Go ahead, Julie.
I don't think we've met since our last District One, right, event?
Family Fun Day?
Workshop.
Do we have a workshop?
We had a workshop after.
So I just want to say, I, I did attend that event. It was well-attended, well-organized. We had a lot of great representation from the community. You know, a lot of students were involved. The line for the ICs, maybe we need two trunks next year, but it was a great event. So I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts that went into planning that and the execution, and of course, we had good weather, so that was great. Congratulations to our graduates. It's always one of my favorite days of the year, serving on this committee is watching graduation, kind of taking those photos of how many people and what they can do to Mr. Ducharme's head during an event.
It's a little different this year.
The slam dunk, I think, took the, took the cake of the fun, fun ways to cross the stage. Want to thank the Town of Blackstone citizens for approving our budget without even a hold, which is always lovely, and especially approving the OPEB, OPEB monies. And is there an update on softball? I've been offline for a little bit, so.
They lost.
At what stage?
So they, they.
After the second round, they lost.
Of states, yeah.
Second round of states.
So they lost the division in the last game? Was that the final game?
The one, the one that we were at, too?
No, no.
It was structured so differently this year. They, instead of going Eastern Mass, Central Mass, Western Mass, they put the whole state into one, so it's hard to say, like, where they kind of fell into, but they lost.
So whatever they, they lost last week, but then they had qualified for states, right? But what, if they had, I'm trying to say this, but if they had won the games before states, they would have gotten the jacket, it would have been equivalent to what volleyball, right? Is that called division?
That's, that's the equivalent of divisions, that we, that's what we figured out last year.
And then they did move on to states, and they were two games in.
Second game, yes.
Second game in, they lost.
Swanky.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, congratulations to them. That, that group has done such a well, such a great job gelling over these last couple of years.
Really did.
The coach is, I don't know, actually know her personally, I, I know through friends, but they seem to have gelled really nicely, which works well for lots of reasons, so congratulations to them. I sort of, like I said, was too busy and lost track. That's all I have, that was a lot.
It was a lot.
I'd like to add one thing. So I, I'm always talking about track or cross-country, and anyone in the audience, if they might be saying, well, what about this sport? But I know some of our sports are doing very well, and, but anyone should, if you have suggestions, you should contact us, and, you know, we'll run it by our group.
We want more for that group.
We want participation from, hear from the, the parents.
And there is a work of, of coming up, the lines with ideas, and so I think we'll be looking for participation with that type of, type of topic.
It'd be nice to have some type of, you know, parents that are, have issues with something going on, instead of them getting so upset and considering going to another school district just because of some type of coaching, coaching issue that could be easily resolved, you know.
Hopefully, the athletic director will fill that role.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Okay, that's all.
Thanks, sure. Anything to add to that?
I got in the mail some invitation from the Mass School Association, school committees, asking about some event on November, I think it was, in Hyannis.
Annual conference.
Is that something that?
Yes, if it is something you're interested in, we actually have money in our budget to pay for, for it. You would register through MASC, and the bill would come to the district. I have never been. You have gone.
I have gone two years. It's, it's very interesting, you get to.
You meet a lot of people.
Meet a lot of people.
Jason usually presents at the, the Mass Conference.
Yeah, it's good if you can do it. Just, the last day tends not to be worth it, but the other days are pretty good.
The workshops are really good. They're different, like, different topics, themes. We've presented on how to, governance and leadership working together to, to develop really good, like, improvement planning. So we presented one year on that, we were asked to do that. And then last year, we were asked to present on, again, governance and leadership working together to provide all means all, to make sure that our kids have what they need. And it's, it's great, we've been asked twice to present, which is really nice.
There's, there's a lot of marketing things there also, Erin. You know, it's like, they're trying to get you to buy something, the laminating, the super-duper laminating machine.
For the district.
That Jane and I, like, absolutely loved and got every free bit of lamination we could get. But there are a lot of good topic concepts that, that are, are part of that, so. I enjoyed it. I actually, my district actually allowed me to go as a professional development opportunity the first time, so I got my days off, and that didn't happen the second year, but it's all right.
But there is a deadline, usually early registration opportunity, that's a little bit cheaper, so I'd say it's, I've, many years was like, I want to go, I'm going to go, and then, and I stopped saying that because something really bad always stopped me from going, so, but I've always wanted to, so. Any other school committee board?
I'd just like to congratulate retirees, the new hires, the seniors, and I want to add that I think Esther started when I was in 11th grade, and I've been out of high school for 33 years, so.
That's great.
Yeah, she was a tremendous asset for pretty much her whole life to this district and the community, so she will be missed, I'm sure.
I'm still in disbelief that she is, is retiring.
I'll, and wish Matt the best of luck, of course.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll echo that as many times as I've said it during the meeting, but Matt, you will be missed. I would also like to say that it is June 9th, 2022, and we do have a certified budget by both towns, and that is a milestone also. And the dynamic duo got that in place for us, so you can keep that and put it on your, your, your job accomplishments, Matt.
Oh, I had already put it on there, and I replied.
But don't ever forget it, because before you guys got here, that didn't happen.
It's good.
Yeah. So duly noted, June 9th, we are done. We'll move on to next year really fast, though.
We are already starting conversations, yeah.
I was also going to mention softball, but, thank you, I, I, it was amazing to see them, and that, our pitcher is just, she's moving on to college, so she's going to do some amazing things.
What's her name?
Amber Arkin.
She's incredible, she's so good.
I think my cousin had told me she pitches over 60 miles an hour, so that would hurt.
It's amazing how the women, the girls softball, they pitch it fast, and men's softball, they lob it up as easy as they can.
Whatever, well, I'm just watching her, and my shoulder hurts.
Is she, I was going to say, does she winell pitch?
What's that?
Incredible, yeah. The team was so good.
They were, they were amazing this year. They, their record was 12 and 5, I think? I might be saying that wrong, I don't even want to say it.
I honestly, I could pick her out and, do you know the coach?
Jill, oh, I'm trying to think of her last name.
She's the JV, she's the JV volleyball coach, yes.
I know her as Vanessa's friend, that's how I know her.
But Vanessa's on the bench with her, too, so they do work well together.
Yeah, they do.
I know Miss Vanessa.
And again, congratulations to our graduates. I believe the juniors have already stepped in, started their senior year. I heard that they've got some of their senior privileges, walking in the front doors, got their senior shirts, and this year will be Fast and Furious for them. If there's nothing else, we'll be moving into an executive session to, in respect to collective bargaining, and we will not be returning to open session. I'll just need a roll call, voting into executive session. Erin?
Aye, yes.
Aye. Chuck?
Aye.
Tammy? Erin, yes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.